This is going to be cold.
Okay, entertaining motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion second to reconvene the PMA roll call.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman. Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
We have reconvened into regular session the Perry Municipal Authority for December 2nd, 2013 at 6:27. Like the citizens and record to reflect that we started this meeting at 6:15 on the dot in the dark. But we recessed until the lights came back on and so we should be in good shape. Next item on our agenda is the invocation. At this time I'd like to ask Pastor Nation to lead us in that please.
Father, we love you and we thank you for this time that we get to gather together and discuss the business of this city. We just ask that in everything that we do that we would honor and glorify you, we ask you, Father, to give us wisdom and we can hear your direction, your guidance. Lord, we thank you for it. We ask you to bless this city. In the name of Jesus we pray.
All right, we'll move down to number one, consent agenda. One item on the consent agenda, that's approval of events of our last gathering.
Motion approved.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda as presented with a rediscussion tonight. Seen none, votes in.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now comments from those assembled? Anybody wishing to make comments on items not on our PMA agenda will take those from you. Don't see any takers. We'll move on to item number six, new business. Any new business needs to come before the PMA? Oh, well, let's do proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries, the governing body. Thank you Dixie for not allowing me to cut people out. New proclamations, commendations, reports. Now new business. Any new business needs to come before the PMA? Seen none, move down to number seven.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yep.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. Core members present, we'll move to item number one, the consent agenda. Several items on the consent agenda, what would you like to do with it? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
The motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented, the seating will be discussed. Seen none, votes in.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now comments from those assembled, item number four, anybody wishing to make comments on items not on our city council agenda will take those from you. Stacy.
Mayor, thank you. Very quickly, Mayor and City Council, I stand before you bittersweetly announcing my resignation as Main Street major. I just wanted to thank everybody for their encouragement and support over the years and let you know that we continue to do our best for you even after I'm gone. I would like to go ahead and introduce to you capable hands that we will be leaving Main Street in, Jennifer Keim, and she has a couple announcements.
Hi, I'm excited to be part of Main Street. I've lived in Perry most of my life and I'm excited. So just some of the items that are happening downtown for Christmas is Christmas crazy days, it's December 10th and 11th, and it's just downtown stores will be offering some sales. And then December 12th is Christmas for kids, it's from three to seven, the kids can come buy items for their parents at a discount price that the merchants are offering. And then the Christmas parade is at 6:30, and we invite the public to attend and to participate, we are still taking that. And children 13 and younger can come in with bikes and they will be entered in for drawing. So lots of fun stuff happening downtown for Christmas time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well Stacy, job well done, going to miss you. And Jennifer, best of luck to you.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments from those assembled? Seen none, we'll move to item number five, proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries, the governing body.
Well, I just want to say thanks Brian, you get the electricity up.
Good job. I was going to ask about our reliability, how is that?
I don't want to answer that question.
Any other comments, commendations, reports, inquiries by the governing body? Seen none, we'll move to item number six, city manager's comments.
Well, I would point out on the electricity outage that it was OGE's, there's an issue with OGE and not with the city of Perry, so glad to point that out and have the opportunity to do so. Anyway, just a few items this evening, we received word that NODA has awarded the city of Perry a REIT grant in the amount of $50,000 to go towards the construction of the roads to serve the Perry commercial park. We actually applied for $100,000, but we are extremely pleased to be a REIT grant recipient in any amount, so $50,000 will be a big help to the budget for the construction of the roads to serve the commercial park. In response to many inquiries, including my son, every time he talks to me, the traffic signal at Sixth and Fur will be replaced by the city of Perry. And I know I've told you this before. Timeline is, Brian's working on timeline to, for the project, but it will definitely be after the first of the year before it gets started, before the work will begin. And completion will depend on obviously whether delivery of materials and the contractor's schedule. So we are, I'm going on record, or you can put this in the paper, that we are replacing the signal at Sixth and Fur. And you know, all those that work in Ditchwich will be extremely happy, those that live east of Perry, so.
That was the only signal that was working at night.
The tried and true, yeah. Always a clown in the country. Earlier today, suddenly notified us that one of their fiber lines that connects Stillwater to Perry was accidentally cut during a road construction project and that affected internet service here in Perry. So the repair crews are probably working on it as we speak, maybe that had something to do with our outage, I don't know, I doubt it. But anyway, they hope to have the services restored later this evening if they're not already restored. And they ask that we, that I apologize for any inconvenience to the Perry customers that use their internet service. And with that, I'll just open it up if you have any questions or any items.
Questions for Mary? Anybody? Okay, Mary, thank you very much. Good report. All right, we'll move to item number seven, which is consider approval of the professional services agreement with planning design group for baseball field project and waive local competitive bidding rule. Council members at our last gathering, you directed staff to go out and put together what a proposal would look like for professional services to design the ballpark. What we brought you this evening is with the planning design group, the group that made their presentation here several meetings ago. And under tab number seven, you can see the breakdown of pricing. What I want to do is I want to make a couple of things clear. First of all, as we discussed, this is just for what the initial plan would look like. This in no way identifies a place for the facility or puts it on any kind of timeline of construction or making the decision to build or construct the facility. That would all come at a later date by vote of the city council, I'm sure with much discussion. What this does, as we discussed in our last meeting, will allow us to have a plan where we could overlay it onto a particular piece of property for size and dimension purposes. It also gives us a very real understanding of what the exact cost would be to construct that. So it's the first step in several long steps of whether or not we decide as a community and as a city council to construct a ball field. So I know that's some of the questions that you'd ask, would be asked on the street if this was approved tonight. What this, if you vote to accept the professional services agreement, the first step would be to fund what I just described, the design phase, which is $10,000. That's going to be the cost. And then you can see the breakdown of the other costs if you elect to go to the next steps. And we'll operate under the terms of this professional services agreement. So in any, in any design or project such as this, you have to have the start of what the plan would be. And so as we discussed last meeting, this is what that is, and we now know what the cost of that service would be, which is probably another question that you would have. So we're looking to seek approval, to sign the professional services agreement, to get them started on the design. Many times in the past, we had done design and ended up setting it on the shelf. This may be one of those times. Then again, you may continue on with the project and it may ultimately be constructed. You can see a hypothetical scenario in your packet where we have overlaid what the field may, might look like, we've done this in-house, if we, if it went on the west side of the Anheuser-Busch facility. But again, nobody is declaring that this is a site, or it will be here, will be here. This is just a way for us to be able, when we address locations, what the size of the facility is, what it would look like, and what it would cost to construct at today's prices. That's the description.
So this, this design will fit on any piece of property, it's not being designed for a specific, we got two or three different locations, we could put it, I'm assuming it's going to change a little bit no matter where we put it.
That's exactly right. The, you know, drainage etc. will all come once you, once you choose the site plan, right. Good, good point though, good question.
This is, say Phase 1 is going to be $1,250,000?
No, Phase 1 is $10,000, that's the entire cost of the project, estimated cost of the project at this point.
So the entire cost is $1,250,000?
Estimated at this point, that's right. And again, that's hard to get, hard to get an estimate, we're using professionals that have been in the business that have built these kind of facilities and we're getting just a, some of you may know it as a wag, a guess at what that cost may be at today's, at today's prices. But until we get into the actual design, which is step one, we won't know, we won't have a real accurate guess. But that's, that's this professional group's just 30,000-foot flyby guesstimate of what the cost would be.
This is very standard. How many other professional groups didn't get their 30,000-foot view from?
Yeah, we actually, you all can jump in if you want, but we actually didn't. What we did is we picked, we went, we, they had come to us, we went to them, we went to a group that has done, it's not fair for me to say the majority of work in Oklahoma, but a number of successful projects, and they come highly recommended as the group to go to for ballpark design. We also have looked at several of the facilities that they've worked on and did and met with, met with those communities, and they were very satisfied and happy with the work that they performed. So in answering your question, none. We went directly to this group and asked them to make the presentation and have not, have not looked anywhere else.
And the item on the agenda tonight does include, if you decide to go forward, there's also an item on there to authorize the waiving of competitive bidding process.
Professional services are often not bid. It's rare that you do bid them, however, you have an ordinance in your code that provides if the fee is over $50,000 that you can, and if you don't, you need to waive it. There's no state law on it, there's no state law requirement that you, that you bid professional services. We've just, as a check, put something in the code that said that, you know, that you should consider it, and if you don't, that you specifically waive it.
This is nothing new, you know, that we waive competitive bidding, we do it, we do it frequently. The only difference here is, is that most of the time they're with professional services groups that we have experience with, that we do that. We don't have experience with this professional services group. Good question.
I kind of have a problem with spending this much money without putting it out for a vote to the citizens.
$10,000?
No, I mean the $1,200, I mean, because you're, you're planning on spending that much. We've already put aside $750,000, which I thought was a lot of money, now we're up to $1,250,000. Personally, I would like to see it come up for a vote if they want this, before we spend it.
Thank you Betty. Any other comments?
I would say, just in response to that, probably you would need to have, to expend some funds to, to put together a conceptual idea of what a ball field, you know, complex would look like in order to take it to a vote of the people, if that's the direction the council wanted to go. So you would need to have something, you know, a little more concrete than just.
Well, I think if you say you're going to build four ballparks and one age groups, I think that would be pretty much about what we have.
Yeah, $10,000 would be, you know, an amount that, you know, would, I mean, this council would need to decide that, but $10,000 to come up with a conceptual drawing and design in order to present and try to educate, you know, the voters, I think would be a good expenditure, if that was the decision of the council.
I've talked to several people, I mean, everybody I've talked to is 100% behind this, and it's people that doesn't have kids that age. It could be grandkids or whatever, it's more than just, you know, somebody like myself with kids. It's, I've talked to, like I say, several people and they were actually encouraged that we are looking at doing something like this. To me, you've got to spend a little money to make a little money.
Well again, I go back to, and I think Mary's exactly right, whether this council likes to, you know, to go to a vote, which can be argued that, you know, we've already conducted a vote in some respects, or whether or not this council likes on down the line to go ahead and construct the facility, you've got to start with the conceptual design and the plan. And anybody that's been around construction, design and planning, this is very reasonable. The funds also come from the, the monies collected by the hotel motel taxes. So although it's a non-budgeted item, it's dollars that will come from the hotel motel taxes, that is the correct purpose, one of the correct purposes for those funds.
But if for some reason hotel motel goes down, it's going to be on to our utility bills, correct?
If, the $10,000?
No, 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 the $1,250,000.
Well, the, you know, 750 was allocated through, you know, through the bond payments. It was also done, and of course we're rehashing things that we've already been over, but that had a four to one coverage ratio. So you're talking about, you're talking about virtually every hotel room in Perry being empty before we're unable to, you know, to make those payments. And so, you know, the bonding people that go out and do the research and the study and evaluate your capacity to be able to repay, you know, have evaluated with a four to one coverage ratio, you know, very easily can cover the payments. We could cover the payments even before we had the increase.
Exactly.
You know, we, you know, we've changed that hotel motel tax from 5% to 8% by the vote of the people. If we could make these payments even prior, you know, to that being, you know, being put into place. So bond council is very comfortable with it, which is exactly why we got the preferred interest rate when we went out and sold the bonds, is because of the coverage ratio. They were extremely comfortable with the coverage ratio. Additionally though, Betty, as in most all of the bond issues that we've covered, we have cross collateralized with the, with the electric utility rates. Fact of the matter is, is that if hotel motel tax wouldn't pay it, we were going to have to pay it anyway. And we pay that through our utility sales, okay? So again, we're rehashing what we've already talked about, but if you, if you pledge utilities, which is usual and customary as a secondary source of repayment, it really lowers the interest rate on the bonds that were sold. If you don't pledge, ultimately the utilities are going to have to pay for it, but you pay a higher interest rate, you know, in the process if it comes, if it comes to that. But again, bond council, research, evaluation by the CFO, all felt comfortable with the fact that even with a large reduction in hotel motel tax, bond payments continue to be made very easily.
Well, and another thing I'm kind of worried about is we have not done a study on what it's going to cost to maintain it, or the cost in the future, I mean, and what the benefits we are going to get out of it. I mean, we've never done anything like that. I mean, how is it going to be returned to us?
I think one of the benefits that we're going to have is we're going to be investing in our kids, and that's a big benefit. Every one of the coaches that I've ever worked with has always, it's not just been about coaching, but it's been about the kids and helping them to become better people. And I think that's an incredible investment that we can make in those kids, and to offer a facility that is safe for our kids to go out and play a sport that is all across America. And I think that that's a major benefit. And this, you know, to me, that's the biggest benefit. The other benefit is the, you know, the tournaments and the revenue that we can receive in our tax sales from bringing people in from the outside, but that's secondary to me. This is about having a facility for our children of this city to be able to play and it be a good place for them to be. We do not have a good enough facility right now. It needs to be better.
Well, and that's another problem you've got. He's already told us that we need to upgrade our facilities that we have now because we're going to have to use those for practice fields. And it looks like we need to fix those first before we start building other fields.
But as we've spoken before, and I don't mean to speak out of turn here, but if we've spoken before, that going and investing in those fields is going to be just as expensive to go and build a new facility for the.
I think the practice, what he's talking, practice facilities, we've got a couple of fields that are sufficient for practice, but that's all we've got. The problem we have right now is we have, they're trying to use them for game and practice and there's not enough.
Right.
If you, those are going to be an overflow. And maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I'll say, you know, the comments I've heard is, why aren't we getting started? The money's been borrowed, why aren't we getting, getting started?
Well, see, I've had other comments, I've had phone calls.
And that's fine, you know, but, but again, if, if we want to see, you know, our community grow, whether it's a ball field or do something, we, we got to do something. The land's not doing us any good just sitting there not putting nothing on it. We, we're losing money by just sitting there. So we got to start somewhere, and we all agreed on the ball fields. So that was a vote that, that everybody agreed on, and like I said, out of, out of 20 people I've talked to, I can't sit and say I've had one after I explained to them that that very thing right there, what's vacant lot, you know, doing good for us, and explain to them the value in it, I have not had one person say anything negative towards it. It's been encouraging. Let's take a minute here, look at, look at item one of the planning design group's document here, the schematic plan phase, in that the statement, line three is, there would be several options provided as to what we build, where we build, and how we build it. I think that is the key here, to get the ideas from the professionals that have done this in the past, to see what can be done with toe bar fields, what can be done at other locations around the city. And if you can get that for $10,000, you, you're spending money very well. I think either way you go, you need to spend $10,000. To show people what you're going to get, you know, what the idea is. I consider this kind of like, I'd have an engineer's report down on a project before I'd let it out for design, and it would be 10 times its price. And, and get a schematic plan for $10,000 is dirt cheap. And you can use it for other things besides just giving us options. You can use it in your election to be for or against a field at some location. At least these guys will be giving us some insight into what can be built and where. And I think that's, that's what we got to vote on tonight, is whether we want to commit to this or not.
Other comments or thoughts or questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring professional services agreement, planning, design group for baseball field project and waive the local competitive bidding.
Second. We have a motion and a second to, to accept the professional services agreement for planning, design of the baseball field project and waive the local competitive bidding rule. Will there be continued discussion or questions before we go into vote? Seen none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. All right, we'll move to item number eight, which is consider making appointments to the Perry Planning Commission. You know, the president gets Supreme Court nominations, I get planning commission nominations. We have Jim Franklin, Michelle Woods, Randy Parrish, that their seats are all coming, coming vacant January of 2014. Both Jim and Randy have agreed to continue to serve, but Michelle Woods does not have an interest in continuing to serve. And so I came up with some, with some, with some names to serve in that position. Frank Douglas, and if you don't know him, works, one of the managers down at Easy Drill, is very active in rental properties here in Perry and has spent an enormous amount of time with me. On his thoughts related to how we do planning and codes, he has a very, very real interest in, in the direction that the city's going as it relates to codes and planning. Seems to be very knowledgeable, he's certainly well educated and well respected in the community. So I put him up as, as my nomination to fill Michelle Woods' position, and I'm seeking confirmation by the council.
Move to approve Frank Douglas.
Second. We have a motion second to approve Frank Douglas' appointment to a three-year term on the Perry Planning Commission. Will there be discussion? Questions, comments? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item number nine, which is consider appointments to the Board of Adjustments. Huh, huh, what?
We don't need to have a motion to reappoint Jim and Randy.
Okay, great. You all heard that.
I made a motion to reappoint. Do I have to do them separate or together?
No, you can do them together.
Okay, Jim Franklin and Randy Parrish.
Second. Thank you for the catch. We have a motion second to reappoint Randy Parrish and Jim Franklin. Will there be discussion, questions or comments? Seen none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, now we'll go to item number nine. Item number nine is consider appointments to the Board of Adjustments. You can see in your packet that back in September, we had three positions expire on the Board of Adjustments, and namely, they were the position which was the local business owner or manager nominated by the chamber, that's currently, that position's currently heralded by Jenny Wade. She has agreed to serve again if nominated. Then we have the utility superintendent, whose position has expired. And of course, with the retirement of Hank Nyda, we've asked and he's agreed to serve, Brian Wheatley, to serve in the position of the utility superintendent position. And then the at-large nomination by post one council persons in an odd number of years was currently held by Shirley Scott. Shirley has agreed to continue to serve if nominated. So it's our recommendation to, to confirm and appoint Jenny Wade, Shirley Scott and Brian Wheatley to the Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to appoint and confirm Jenny Wade, Shirley Scott and Brian Wheatley to another term on the Board of Adjustments. Any questions or comments? Seen none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.[1780.12]
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, now we'll move to item number 10, which is consider approval of ordinance 2013-29 to Chapter 18 of the Perry Municipal Code 2012 entitled Fee Schedule by Providing for a Certain Amendment to Section 175N entitled Sanitary Sewer Use Rates by the Addition of a New Subsection C Concerning Septage Fees, Savings, Severability, Repeater, Complication Penalty, and Declaring Emergency. Mary, I'll let you take this one because it's just so long.
With the increased oil and gas activity in the area, we had a number of port a potty businesses spring up that do servicing the field oil well sites. And, and so, I think we went from one to, I don't know what we have now, but there's quite a number of them. And so, really felt like the, there was a need to formalize the agreements with these, these groups. They do have a form that they have to bring in and have signed off by the city of Perry. But what we're proposing tonight is to do an annual permit, which will be 250,000, a monthly fee of 30,000, and then anything over 1,000 gallons would be at 3 cents a gallon. We're currently, just administratively, we, you know, went ahead and set it up with the monthly permit of 30,000 and the, the per gallon fee of 3 cents a gallon. When we checked around, Ponca City has a program that we felt like would work for us, which is what we're proposing. And so, what we would do is, is notify, if this is approved, we would notify all the companies that are currently using our wastewater plant to deposit their sewage from the, that they collect. And we formalize that with them, and those that want to continue to use our facility will be requiring them to pay the annual fee in addition to the monthly fee and the per gallon. The, we're, we're really in a situation, I mean, you know, Hewlett's utilized, you know, the wastewater plant to deposit their sewage when they had the port a potty business. And so, we're just continuing to utilize the wastewater plant for that service to the local companies. Perry is, you know, there aren't, there are not a lot of options for these companies. You know, there are, Stillwater does not accept, Guthrie is limited, Ponca City does, but there's a number of them that do not. So, you know, cities that Stillwater, Tonka, Wellmawson, Billings, and Garber allow no dumping. But we feel like in a controlled environment, we can, you know, allow that to, you know, allow that service to be offered.
Is there a reason why these other towns don't allow dumping?
They've just chosen not to, basically. I don't, I don't know why. They've just chosen not to.
Is this the, the fees here, the annual fee and a monthly fee on top of that?
And a per gallon rate.
Over 1,000 gallons.
This, I'm not sure this even covers our costs, because we do, you know, but they do have to go to the wastewater plant when it's open. So, you know, we have staff there that works with them, and we do the billing. So, I'm not sure that this actually, you know, this might come close to covering our costs, but...
Well, a good point there that you're allowing this and that it encourages them to use it instead of dumping in the creeks like they did in, prior to this in the early 80s. You can see aerial photographs of lakes and see the influx, influx going into the lakes from tankers and such. So, this could be so high that they'd do that again, but if we keep it low, I believe we'll encourage that and hopefully keep our Black Bear and some of the other creeks clean.
There are also residual benefits to this. I, you know, one of, one of the drivers of this particular need was the gentleman that bought the Hewlett service, and he's a, he's a big business owner of these, of these port a potties that comes out of the Tulsa area, but I don't think it's Tulsa.
Owassau.
Owassau, thank you. And I had a, I had an opportunity to speak with him a couple of times, you know, related to this. And of course, he, we can't hold his feet to the fire, but he does make a good point, and that is that, look, I'm wanting to establish, you know, a business in your community. I'm going to have up to 30 drivers that are going to be, you know, living and trading in your community. I'm going to be buying my fuel in your community. And so, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not some fly-by-night, you know, organization. You know, you'll be doing me a service by a lot, giving me a place to dump, for which I'll be paying for, but you're going to get something back, too. You know, you're going to have people in your community that, that have jobs. And that, that point kind of resonated with me. I, you know, I had a little bit of concern, especially when you see these other communities that have elected not to. We've done a lot of work on our wastewater treatment facility. We still have work to do with the drying of the beds, et cetera. But, you know, if we can be, if we can be a team player, if we can, you know, make it, make it a little easier on a, on a business by providing them, you know, a method, and we can charge a reasonable fee for it, I think it's a win-win. So, there are some residual value to it, and so, it bears even more consideration as we're sold.
Motion to approve ordinance 2013-29.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to, to approve the ordinance 2013-29. Will there be just questions or comments or discussion? I wanted, let me just ask Mary a question, or Bryce. If we vote and approve this and we determine that, that we far missed the mark on, on cost, you know, versus charge, in other words, you know, if we've missed the mark on this, we could certainly revisit this at any time.
Sure.
And bring the fees up, you know, proportionate to what our expense is with providing the service, correct?
Correct.
And we'll have somebody maybe evaluate that once we start getting the volume, volume numbers from these people that, that are dumping? Okay, good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we go to a vote? You have a motion, a second?
Do.
Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. All right, thank you, council. Move to item number 11, which is consider approval of agreement in school district number one, Perry Noble County, Oklahoma, here on the school, an exchange bank and trust company, here referred to as bank, for the gifting of real property known as Ripley Field and authorized execution of the deed. I'm going to ask that this, this agenda item be tabled. The reason for that is that Mary's been in talks with the Perry Public School, specifically Scott Chinnewith, who has not had a good opportunity to speak to his board about this and to get input from the board. And I think, I think that in all fairness, that, that the board should be, the school board should be brought up to speed and, and be able to provide complete input before we address it here at the council table. Additionally, and obviously, I have a conflict as it relates to this, so by tabling it, we can accomplish two things. I'll be out of the way, and, and the school board will have plenty of time to address this before we, we, we address it here. So, I would make a motion that we table this agenda item.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to table the agenda item. Will there be discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number 12, new business. A new business needs to come before the Perry City Council. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to go into item number 13, which is convening the executive session for the purposes of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development in the city of Perry, including the creation of a proposal to entice a retail restaurant in the Perry Commercial Park and the creation of a proposal to entice a business to the South Commercial Park as disclosed. Disclosure of this proposal would violate the confidentiality of the business pursuant to 2500 S 307C 10 and for the possible purchase or appraisal of certain property not owned by the city of Perry at or near the Perry commercial park. I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to convene an executive session. Before the vote, I'll tell the press that I do believe that there's a potential for action after this executive session, so it's up to you what you want to do. We'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item number 15, and that is to take any action necessary included but not limited to the approval of economic development agreements to induce the location of business or businesses and/or the purchase or appraisal desired real property. Any action needs to be taken? Gordon?
Well, I move we direct city staff to prepare the documents of agreement with interested parties in that area.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and I do believe that that covers, I think that'll cover both.
Yes.
We have a motion, a second, by Lynn.
It was Lynn.
Oh, Lynn.
Did you say something, Lynn?
I did.
Will there be questions, comments, or thoughts before moving to a vote? Seeing none, votes in order.